Mayor, members of the council, there are no items to report out.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our fire chief Jeff to lead us into pledge allegiance, please. Real call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Protem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here. Are there any items for agenda review?
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. We have none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, presentation of a 20-year service award to Eric Mancia, digital and print media coordinator, Department of Administrative Services, and administrative services director Carolyn Johnson is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to recognize Eric Mancia this evening for his over 20 years of service to the city of Simi Valley. Eric began his career at the city on October 21st, 2002, filling the position of printer for the support services division in the administrative services department. His duties as printer included producing everything from department forms, business cards, letterhead, annual budgets, financial reporting documents, and agenda packets for city council. In addition, Eric created and designed a variety of brochures, pamphlets, flyers, and holiday banners that were displayed throughout the city, including the logo used for the city's 40th anniversary celebration. In October of 2017, Eric was promoted to the position of graphics support services technician, where he then designed the logo for the city's 50th anniversary celebration. In this role, he transitioned to a greater variety of duties, including developing art for print and digital media, photography coordination, arranging event displays, and supervising the city's printer. He learned the city's ERP system and became responsible for submitting purchase requisitions, processing, receiving, and inputting new vendor records. He has also saved the city time and money with his technical abilities by troubleshooting equipment problems in his division. On August 19th of 2019, Eric was promoted to the position of digital and print media coordinator. In this role, he took on the supervision of the entire print shop function and has been involved in recruitment and hiring for the division, as well as being a mentor to his newer staff working for him. He has also continued to design graphic media and works closely with all city departments. He has received many commendations from other city staff for his customer service. Eric was born in Los Angeles and raised in the San Fernando Valley. He moved to Ventura County in the early 90s, and he and his wife Lori have called Moore Park home for the last 30 years. They have two children, Danielle and Scott, and love living in Ventura County. His interests include mountain biking, kayaking, playing guitar, and discovering all of the microbreweries and small restaurants and local sites that Ventura and Santa Barbara counties have to offer. Please join me in congratulating Eric for his 20 years of service to the city.
Well, Eric, congratulations. That's for your service to the city. That's a lot. We have something in common. I happen to be a graphic professional. I happen to own a commercial printing company, so. But what I do have here is your 20-year pin, which is really nice, and the certificate, and personal thank you from me.
Thank you.
You have somebody out there taking a photograph?
What did you?
All right. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 1D2, presentation of a 15-year service award to Gary Boswell, deputy administrative services director, information technology, Department of Administrative Services, and Carolyn Johnson will present this item as well.
I am pleased to recognize Gary Boswell this evening for his over 15 years of service to the city of Simi Valley. Gary is the city's deputy administrative services director, information technology. He began his career at the city on October 29th, 2007. At the time of his hire, the city had many old technology systems that he was tasked with maintaining. Gary, along with his very qualified and dedicated staff, have successfully overseen many important projects that transitioned Simi Valley into a more up-to-date technologically advanced city. Some examples are, after the remodel of the community services area of City Hall, Gary oversaw the relocation of 100 desktop computers and peripherals without any interruption in services. He also made sure that the new remodeled area had updated wiring and networking technologies installed to support future growth. He engineered, selected, and implemented a new uninterruptible power supply for the police department data center and radio room that had upgraded monitoring capabilities and were designed to handle future growth, and also upgraded the police department's dispatch and reporting system. This was back in 2014. Converted the city's email system from Groupwise to Outlook, this required migrating over 600 mailboxes, converting over 15 million emails, and training over 200 users. He evaluated and selected a new code enforcement system that automated tedious tasks and centrally manages code enforcement efforts. For the first time, case-related information became available to staff wirelessly from computers in their vehicles. He moved the city away from a tape-based backup system to an electronic backup system for the city's over 100 servers, and implemented Justice Mobile, a mobile app that gave Simi Valley police immediate access to state and federal criminal justice information via a smartphone. Installed Wi-Fi in the council chambers and other city buildings, and oversaw the upgrade of the technology in the council chambers. He upgraded all the city's firewalls to newer versions, replaced outdated manual cash registers at city facilities, and implemented a new cash sharing system, implemented a new mobile device management solution, and deployed phones to all sworn officers. And he oversaw the city's transition to a new ERP system. This included everything from writing specifications and functionality requirements for the request for proposals, to coordinating demos for staff, creating a detailed budget, negotiating a contract, and overseeing the entire implementation, including the training of over 100 staff and converting legacy data. All this in just over one year from the signing of the contract to the first module going live. He upgraded the city's computers to Office 365, assisted with the citywide website redesign, and immediately implemented Zoom meetings and set up permissions for over 120 users to be able to access city systems from home as a result of the COVID pandemic. So all of these projects are in addition to the regular daily ongoing tasks of maintaining and supporting city staff with all their technical needs. Gary has lived in Simi Valley since 2009. He and his wife Petra grew up in Simi Valley and attended Royal High School. They have one son, Austin, who is graduating this May from USC with a master's degree in electrical engineering and works for Boeing as a space systems engineer. His interests include going on horseback rides with his wife and their horses, Kegar and Annie, in the beautiful hills surrounding the city, camping in the desert, and surfing. So please join me in congratulating Gary for his 15 years of service to the city.
So Gary, you've been one busy guy. And that was some impressive stuff in there. I recognize what that was.
Yeah, I should have actually put everybody's name in and did it because I would just oversaw everybody. It's all the people that worked for me that did all that work, not myself.
Well, appreciate what you do for our city, and I have a pin here for you, 15 years, and a certificate, and of course, a personal thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3A1, appointment of Simi Valley council on aging executive board member and assistant community services manager Robert Martin is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the city council. One position became vacant on the city council, excuse me, one position became available on the council on aging executive board on January 31st, 2023. As a result of the executive board membership, member resignation, the executive board advised the city council on issues impacting seniors, excuse me. I apologize. Let me start that one over. Okay, so I'm going to start that whole paragraph over. I apologize. One position became vacant on the city, excuse me, on this council on aging executive board on January 31st, 2023, as a result of an executive board member resignation. The executive board advises the city council on issues impacting seniors and conducts fundraising activities to support senior programs within the community. Recruitment to fill this vacancy began on February 1st, 2023, and concluded on March 3rd, 2023. The COA received one application. The council on aging conducted an election at its March 13th, 2023 meeting, and is recommending one nominee for appointment to fill the vacant position on the executive board with a term commencing on March 20th, 2023, and concluding on January 31st, 2024. The nominee is Al Brown. Al's here with us in the audience today. It is recommended that the city council approve and the mayor appoint this applicant to the city to the council on aging executive board. This concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions, but we think Al would be wonderful to fill that spot. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Judge.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to make a motion that we, that you, that we appoint and that we recommend you appoint, is that the way, sir? Al Brown to the council on aging.
Second?
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3B1, presentation by Ventura County Fire Chief Jeff Pike regarding 2022 operations in Simi Valley.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, city council members. I'm Jeff Pike. I'm a division chief with Ventura County Fire Department, representing the city of Simi Valley. It's an honor and both a pleasure to be here tonight to give you guys an overview on the Ventura County Fire Department year in review and the services we offer to the city of Simi Valley. So tonight what I'll cover is I'll give a brief overview of the Ventura County Fire Department, our current organization, Ventura County Fire Department in Simi Valley, the number of firefighters we have, the resources available, the type of emergency calls Ventura County Fire Department responds to, talk about some of our specialized units that we have access to to mitigate the emergencies that we face here in the city of Simi Valley. And then finally, we'll discuss the fire department programs and projects that are currently ongoing. So 1928, the fire district was established here in Ventura County. We're slowly approaching the 100-year anniversary. The fire chief, who's Fire Chief Dustin Gardner, is appointed by the county, Ventura County Board of Supervisors. We serve all the unincorporated areas of the county of Ventura, along with seven cities, of which one of those cities is the city of Simi. The big part of our budget, we are property tax funded. Participating cities benefit from shared resources. So not all of our resources are located here in the city of Simi Valley. However, our specialized resources, everything from crash units, hazmat units, wildland units, are all available for to mitigate emergencies here in the city. We have 32 fire stations, including six located in the city. We have 655 personnel that work for Ventura County Fire Department. That's a combination of both sworn civilian personnel. Okay, our organization, we're divided into five bureaus. As I mentioned before, our fire chief is Fire Chief Dustin Garner, who was appointed to that position approximately one year ago. Deputy Chief Chad Cook oversees day-to-day operations of all five bureaus. I know this is kind of hard to see, but we have a business service bureau, admin service, fire prevention, support services, and really the day-to-day operations is our emergency service bureau. That's kind of the, all the fire engines, the fire trucks, that's everyone that responds on emergencies here in the city to mitigate those issues. Okay, now as far as Simi Valley is concerned, we have six fire stations. Station 41 is off of Church Street. That is our battalion headquarters. There we have one fire engine. We have the ladder truck that you see driving around town with the tiller bucket in the back, and one battalion chief. The battalion chief is the one that oversees all the command and control operations day-to-day here in the city of Simi Valley. Station 43 is on LA Avenue. It's the newer fire station. We have one paramedic engine, one brush engine, which their capabilities are going on wildland fires, and then we have a utility pickup truck that gives us the ability to respond to remote rescues in the surrounding hills. Station 44, which is Wood Ranch, we have what's called a quint. That is essentially a ladder truck with water. So it gives us the capability not only to have an aerial ladder to reach the higher buildings that we have throughout the city, but it also gives us the capability to put out fires with water onboard. There's what we call a day engine. So it's an engine designed, it's the same as a normal engine. However, it's, working hours are from eight in the morning till six at night, and it's basically to handle the surge of EMS calls that we experience throughout the city of Simi, Thousand Oaks, and other areas of our county. They, they kind of move throughout where the activity is. And then we have a reserve engine and a reserve truck there. Station 45 off of Fourth Street, that's one fire engine, one reserve engine, a utility what we discussed already, and we have one dozer or bulldozer. That's what you see on the big, big trailer going around town. That's to mitigate brush fires and put in control lines. Station 46 on Tapo Street, we have one engine and one reserve engine at that fire station. That's one of our older stations here, so it's a little bit smaller. We just don't have the room to get more equipment there. Station 47 is the newest station. That's in Big Sky off of Arringer. We have one paramedic resource, one engine there, and a reserve ladder truck. Okay, as far as staffing levels currently in Simi, we have one division chief, which is myself, three battalion chiefs, 24 fire captains, 24 engineers, 30 firefighters, six firefighter paramedics, and two fire prevention officers. Now, we do work shifts, so that's why those numbers are higher. On a daily basis, we have 30 firefighters on duty in the city of Simi. Now, if we ever have an incident, a large-scale brush fire, structure fire, hazmat, going back to those shared resources, we would get those resources from the city of Moore Park, the city of Thousand Oaks, and other areas throughout the county to mitigate the problem here in the city. Okay, some of the emergencies we go on, structure fire, wildland, traffic collisions, medical calls is 80%, I think is the number that we respond to. That's the biggest part of our workload. Debris flows and flooding, as we all know, we've been experiencing a pretty wet winter. We have another storm coming in. We've been doing augmented staffing to react to this weather, to be able to handle any additional calls for flooding. Hazardous materials team, an urban search and rescue, water rescue, aircraft emergencies, and TMS, which is the tactical emergency medical support. And that's a newer program that we work closely with our law enforcement partners, especially the city of Simi. We're really integrated with them, training, and what we, we support them on their law enforcement mission of barricaded subject, and we support that medical component for law enforcement agencies. Okay, some of the specialized units, I already kind of briefly touched on some of these. Crash rescue, we have a crash rescue at the Camarillo Airport. That helps us mitigate, obviously, aircraft down. It is able to come off of the Camarillo Airport to hazard other, to handle other hazards involving flammable liquids. We could have an overturned tanker on the 118 freeway. It could mitigate that. So it's just the travel time, but that's a really good resource to have for any oil fires. The hazardous material response team, that's also in Camarillo, centrally located to the county of Ventura, that can also come out and handle any hazmat-type calls. Urban search and rescue, centrally located in Camarillo also. We also have a resource in Moore Park. So their ability to do the technical rescue side, rope, anything involving rope rescue, confined space rescue, earthquakes, that's what they'll mitigate. Water rescue has been super busy of late. Luckily, here in Simi, we've not had too many issues related to the rain, but throughout the county, we've definitely been busy doing swiftwater rescues. And then our wildland and aviation is in the Camarillo area, and that whole division is able to mitigate the wildland brush fires that we experience here in the county and in Simi. Hopefully, with all this rain, that's a little more subdued this upcoming fall. Okay, as far as the number of calls for service, this is the year-to-date total that we had for '22. So January to December, you see the city of Simi there, the total, 11,326 total calls, of which the first column there, 9,020 was medical calls. And then county-wide, 92,000 calls, and those calls are increasing every year. Okay, this is just a real quick map of medical calls throughout the city of Simi. As you can see, within the city limits, they're pretty evenly dispersed. As you get out towards Wood Ranch there, obviously a little bit less, but as you're in the heart of the city, LA Avenue, Royal, Cochrane, going through there with more apartments and density, you're going to have more medical calls. density, you're going to have more medical calls. Okay, fires, we obviously don't have a lot of fires. However, when we do get fires, it takes a lot of resources to mitigate the fires. Anywhere from 12 to 15 fire engines, up to two to six hours, depending on how long and how how involved the structure was. So there's where the fires were. Okay, traffic collisions, once again, another year-to-date, you kind of see all on the main streets, the main streets are where you're going to have your traffic accidents. Okay, so increasing response capacity, we're always looking at where we can do better in adding resources to mitigate these emergencies. Obviously, with all the urban-wildland interface, we're always looking to add our ability to mitigate wildfires. So with that, a couple of years ago, we added two Firehawk helicopters. And we're going to be adding one more wildland hand crew in 2023 here in a couple of months, and that will give us a total of four. And the big news I have to announce tonight is additional firefighters will be added to the city of Simi Valley. Our Fire Chief, the executive staff, has determined that we need to add a paramedic squad back to the city to provide a higher level of service to the citizens here. And it's going to be a paramedic squad, basically gives us a ton of flexibility with two additional firefighters to add that advanced life support capability, lot more mobile, they can get to calls a lot quicker, and they can help with our staffing with the ability to mitigate EMS calls. It's also an opportunity for us to provide additional training for our paramedics that are upgrading through the EMS system. So timeline somewhere in the middle part of the year, and we're not, we're still in the final stages of determining exactly what fire station this new paramedic squad will be placed at. So some of the projects and programs that we are going through year to year is the growth of the paramedic program. As you can see, we're adding the squad. We're always currently, we're always evaluating our ability to provide EMS. We're remodeling and relocating stations. We're relocating Fire Station 34 in the city of Thousand Oaks. And here in Simi, we don't have any significant facility. We're not going to be relocating anything coming up in the next year, but we just continue to remodel and upgrade to make sure our firefighters have the best possible facilities. We have a Fire Explorer program that's ongoing for 15 to 21 years old. You can get on vcfd.org if you have anyone in that age range looking to be a firefighter. It's a great program. Our regional training center, located in Camarillo, at the Camarillo Airport, is going to be going a huge expansion. We're going to be adding a multi-story burn building for firefighters to do state-of-the-art training with propane props. We're also going to do another residential structure that we can do live-fire training. And we'll have some flashover props, so that will give us the ability to make sure our firefighters are the highest-trained possible firefighters here in the county. Operational area cooperation, we're constantly working with other fire law enforcement agencies, not only here in Ventura County, but here in Simi Valley, we're always having training and meetings to make sure we are on the same page with LA County, LAFD. So when we get these fires that start in LA County and spread into Ventura County, that we're able to work together with our apparatus and equipment, radio communications, command and control, so we can have a successful outcome. We're always looking at new technology, new equipment. We have this new EMS device that we're putting out to all the companies. It's called a Lucas Device. It's basically a device on a cardiac arrest patient that will do the CPR, the compressions for the firefighter, so it's perfectly done. So that will result in better outcomes for cardiac arrest patients. Apparatus, ongoing replacing fire engines, ladder trucks around the 10-year mark. So we have the newest, best equipment to offer here to the city of Simi. And then fire prevention, our fire hazard reduction program, creating resilient neighborhoods, enforcing new fire codes, and then, of course, always educating our community. So that concludes the presentation for tonight. So like I said, vcfd.org for further information on the Fire Department, and I appreciate your time and letting me have this opportunity to present to you. Any questions?
I have one silly one. Why do you call your trucks apparatus? I've always wondered.
That's all, that's what we've been taught from the initial, when we went to college, to learn about the Fire Department. So it's apparatus, and then we, engines, trucks. So overall, we call them apparatus.
I've always, I used to tease Keith about that all the time. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Turn my mic on. Just a couple of quick questions, and one is a question total of ignorance. When a resident calls 911 and you respond, whether it be medical, fire, whatever, is there any assessment financially that they bear by response? I know if they take an ambulance possibly, but that's completely different.
There's none. And you know, there are cases in which we will pursue cost recovery for DUIs, arson, there's things in those circumstances that we look at those variables and would look at a cost recovery component. Otherwise, no, it's, we come and we provide the service.
Wonderful. And I assume that was the answer, but wanted to clarify. And one other question. If someone wanted to be on the wild land crew.
Hand crew.
Hand crew. I can't even write on writing. How does one apply? How does one get hired?
So we just went through a hiring process.
Okay.
But you can go to job opportunities on vcfd.org. We are looking for young, eager, wildland firefighters right now. We cannot keep up with the demand. So it is, if we, if there are people interested in wanting to be firefighter, it's a great path to enter into the fire service. But you have to be in peak physical condition. So make sure you're out there training and running and preparing to do it. It's a lot of hiking and a lot of running. So.
Makes sense. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
On the medical calls that you do in the city, are you seeing an increase in any particular type of medical call? And I'm thinking specifically about overdoses.
You know, more falls than anything. The overdoses are relatively the same. Those kind of come and go. But as far as, it's more the fall victims that we go on.
Okay, thank you.
And I just simply wanted to thank you and the entire department for the job you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, appreciate that. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3C1, informational presentation by Youth Employment Service Advisory Board member Gloria Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. My name is Gloria Bowman. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My day job is officially fitness instructor, but I'm a lifeguard, lifeguard instructor, and water safety instructor for the city of Calabasas. But I'm here tonight in the capacity of my role as the Chair of the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, YES. The City Council, in their wisdom, recognized the importance of assisting youth entering the workforce when they established the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board in 1982. The Youth Employment Service Advisory Board is comprised of 15 members and up to three alternates that include representatives of government agencies, schools, employers, and community members at large to discuss employment issues that relate to youth. Simi Valley is one of the few cities in the region that offers this type of service to prepare our young people for the jobs of the 21st century. Our board's continued focus has been on workforce development of youth and connecting them with various career pathways and promoting the hiring of teens and young adults as they enter the economic ladder. Now I'll go over a few programs held to accomplish these. Annually, we host a summer workshop series at the Simi Valley Public Library that last year included one, interview skills, two, entering the workforce with a focus on entrepreneurship, followed by a mini-volunteer fair, three, building a resume and/or brag sheet for jobs, college, and scholarship applications, and four, using LinkedIn learning to gain job skills. Last November, we also hosted a volunteer fair at the Boys and Girls Club of Moore Park and Simi Valley for community members of all ages. The free event was designed to connect local nonprofits with potential volunteers. Our major program is teaching essential interview skills workshops. Last month, over 1,300 local students received training on work permits, application completion, digital first impression, appropriate interview attire, follow-up procedures, networking basics, the interview process and common questions, resume writing, workplace ethics, and best practice on leaving a job. Each participant also received a comprehensive, up-to-date supplemental interview skills workshop handbook to keep. Our Business Incubator Committee with the Chamber of Commerce, called Startup Simi, has continued to offer programming for budding entrepreneurs through its Inspire Entrepreneurship Speaker Series, with events held last year from an interactive presentation focused on starting nonprofit organizations led by Soaring Spirits International President and Founder Michelle Neff Hernandez, to a panel discussion on starting a cottage food business in your own home with three local entrepreneur businesses, Cakes by Christina, Our Daily Bread, and Min's Baked Goods, who had all successfully launched their home-based cottage food operations in Ventura County. Sue Seeler, Cottage Food Program Operations Specialist with the Ventura County Resource Management Agency's Environmental Health Division, reviewed the permitting process and regulations, as well as answered questions. I encourage you to check out startupsimi.com for the main takeaways from her presentation, as well as other helpful resources for entrepreneurs. Our first job and career expo was held in 1987. Over the past 35 years, close to 26,000 youth have been served. Our 36th annual event is scheduled on Saturday, April 22, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will be holding the event in a true library takeover fashion for the second year at the Simi Valley Public Library. We are co-hosting the library takeover event with the city Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Simi Valley Public Library, and sponsored by the Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise. The free event will feature practice interviews, onsite interviews with employers, exposure to career options, internships and volunteer opportunities, assistance with completing job applications, workstations to submit online job applications, and help writing resumes. This year, more than 60 employers and organizations are anticipated to participate in the job fair, and we are also expecting more than 200 job seekers, about teens and adults, to attend. We have some exciting new programs coming up over the next few months, including a Let's Talk Money Financial Literacy Four-Part Workshop Series for teens and young adults, set to kick off on April 22, then an Alternatives to University webinar on May 23, and a new YES Job Readiness Certificate program to begin this summer. Much of what our board is able to accomplish would not be possible without key collaborations with the Chamber of Commerce, the local business community, including Bank of America's LEAD Program, the Simi Valley Unified School District, and numerous community volunteers. Our call to action, so to speak, is to encourage more local employers to hire youth, whether paid or as unpaid interns, to provide critical opportunities for our youth to build job skills, to offer job shadow experiences to provide youth exposure to various career opportunities, and to get involved by participating in our job and career fair. This results in a robust and skilled labor force. Thank you for continuing to support the work of the YES Advisory Board and YES program. We invite each of you to come and witness the work the board does by stopping by the Job and Career Fair on Saturday, April 22, or join us at our regular board meetings at 8:15 a.m. on the third Wednesday of each month in the City Hall Community Room. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our YES program.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Gloria, thank you for that wonderful report, very detailed. I am disappointed that I had to leave YES boards because of all the great things that you, as a board, accomplished. There were a couple of additions I wanted to make that you didn't mention. The booklet that you have for the Leave Behind for the students was also used, and one of your board members, Tim, came and helped at the Samaritan Center do the same interview skills seminar and assistance with members of that community, and so it transcends the youth. I've been impressed by how much that small group gets to accomplish, and I'm looking forward to the job fair this year. Another compliment, what you were able to do during COVID to keep youth engaged and do things online and adapt to that environment where we had to go online was pretty amazing. So thank you for all that you and the board do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Litzter.
Gloria, thank you for all you're doing, really wonderful things. I just had a quick question, and just to confirm, it's April 22. Is that right for the coming up in just a few weeks? Very good. How were you able to reach 1,300 young people? You mentioned that you, that basically that they received training for work permits, et cetera. How did you reach so many? Are you involved in the schools? How do you reach so many?
Part of the staff, the board members, we spend one full day at Royal, and there were between 500 and 600 students. This year, I believe they targeted the English department. It might have been history. I'm not sure at which school. And those teachers agree to give up a class period to bring their kids over. So we are in their library, and each period, we have a number of students come in, and we have a number of presenters from the board, so it doesn't get boring. You have different voices going on. So you have all of those students from Royal, and then we went to Simi High, and then Santa Susanna, and I believe we had one session at Apollo.
Wonderful. I was hoping you'd say that you were able to be actually in the schools. That's fabulous. Again, thank you for what you're doing. Much appreciated.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening, Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the City Council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item 4 and Agenda Item 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called in in the order in which the car was submitted to speak for the public statement, Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we will begin public statements.
Please proceed.
Thank you. The first speaker, Stephanie Smith.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Smith, and I live here in Simi Valley. My family has actually lived here for over 40 years. I had just gotten this flyer today. I'm sorry, I've been taking care of my dad, who had a massive stroke, who was a Vietnam veteran. And, but this is something that I've had issues with, so I just want to say that I am for. I'm just going to read this, what the flyer says. If you would like to have the freedom to park your RV, or boat, or car, et cetera, on a on a pad separate from your driveway, now is the time to speak out. So, I'm here to speak out on that issue. I also wanted to state, because I have had problems with this, that if you guys are going to enforce a law, that it can't be selective on my particular street and other streets in my neighborhood. One person will have the city come and say, "You can't do this, and you have to move," and ticket, and literally all the way down the street, in either direction, you got people parked there, popped out, cones out, electrical hooked up. I park my RV there, and I get every, it seems like every single time. You know, and it's like, wait a minute. This just doesn't seem fair, that it's very selective, and that other people are just, it's just ignored. And so, if you're going to enforce the law, it should be enforced for everybody. Not that I agree with it, but if you're going to do it, let's do it for everybody. Thank you.
Brian Kane.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Brian Kane, and I've been a resident of Simi for 33 years. And I would like to comment on the RV parking question. And I'm a member of the homeowner board for Madison County, which is at the kind of the intersection of Royal and Sequoia, going up the hill there, going south of Sequoia. I've been there for about 12 years. My wife and I have owned the house there for 22 years, but I've been on the board for 12 years. And we have an RV parking requirement, and I'd just like to explain that because it seems to work quite well for my community. And the rules are, you can't park an RV in the street, can't park it in the driveway, except for like 36 hours or whatever for loading and unloading. The following additional capability is there. You, if you have one of the original plat-approved lots, and there's about one out of every eight homes, 350 homes in my group in Madison County, and about one out of every eight had a definition on the original plat map for an RV pad. But the RV pad, if this is the street, and cars are going up and down the street, you can park, you can come up the driveway. On the side of your driveway, you could put an RV on a pad there if it was pre-approved. I know that particular rule is not relevant to the city. It has to be something I certainly agree with. It has to be consistently enforced. But what does work well in my community is to have RVs on the driveway side of the home park on a pad alongside the home. That is permitted if it was a pre-approved plat. I just want to say that. And we also have a rule that only one RV or recreational vehicle, boat, et cetera, can be on a given lot, just because, you know, I'm all for freedom and people being able to do what they want with their property. But RVs are pretty hard to ignore when they're big and they're in front of someone else's house or in front of your house. It does kind of interrupt the attractiveness of the community. So, you know, I'd say what we have at Madison County seems to have worked very well for us. And I thank you for your attention. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Jerry Placeros.
My name is Jerry Placeros. I've been in Simi since 1973. Been in my house for almost 40 years now. Seems that everything is about the RVs and where they're parked, that they make the city look ugly and unsafe. A lot of our citizens have parked, their RVs are parked on their privately-owned homes, on concrete, in front of their house, just not where the city wants it. A lot of us can't help it where our garages are. We don't have space on the other side of our garages. Some of us have been parking RV on our property for 40 to 50 years now, and there's been no problems with it. The discussion is how to start enforcing the city laws. Why don't we start with our streets first, instead of people who have RVs in their own personal driveways? You can drive around the city, and we can find that we have illegal commercial trailers, we have RVs parked on the streets, we even have hooked up the streets that have vehicles that have flat tires on them, and they're abandoned, basically. Yet, those are all still on our city streets and everything. Nothing's done about any of them. They want to come after the RVs in our driveway. The city hasn't been able to solve any of those problems, even. If we can start working on those, maybe we can figure out what to do a little bit better down the road with some of the RVs. There's just, even on the properties, in lawns, we have illegally parking of cars. We have commercial trailers on them. We have RVs that are parked on the lawns. I see this in my neighborhood all over the place. Yet, we're going to force our citizens to sell their RVs because they can't afford to store them someplace now. And once these laws are passed, we're going to be at the, we're going to have to succumb to the charges that these RV storage places are going to be in. And they're going to raise their prices on us and everything. We have a lot of senior citizens that this is the way that they enjoy their lifestyle. They're not going to be able to afford to be able to pay for storage for them or anything, and yet, it's a very cheap way for people to get out and enjoy our city, our state. It's just, I mean, we're worried about that. I've got neighbors that've got six-foot-tall weeds in the front of their yards. We've got people with broken windows. Screens are falling out of their windows. We have trampolines in front yards. Yet, that's okay. But we can't have an RV inside of there. I think we can do something with RVs that we should be able to figure out that they can be on it. Is it on a concrete pad? No, it doesn't have to be on the side of the garage where the garage is. We just need to figure out how to do that a little bit better and be a little bit easier on the citizens of Simi Valley than just hardcore on it. Thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Shannon Nash.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm here also speaking on Item 9A, the proposed RV discussion. So, what I want to add to the discussion here is that I live particularly, I've been in Simi Valley for 20-plus years, and I live in a zero-lot line development. And for those not familiar with what that means, it means your house is actually on one property line, and you have one side yard. So, in my particular development at LA &amp; Sterns, my garage sits on the property line, and I've got a 12-foot side yard setback on the other side, and it mirrors all the way down throughout the development. So, there isn't room on the garage side of the lot line, but we do have this 12-yard setback on the other side. And what I would ask that you consider is that for those properties that don't really fit the mold of just about everywhere else in town, that you give some leeway to allowing the other, the 12-foot side yard to be an area that could potentially have RV parking outside of the front yard setback. I've got something like 43 feet to my fence on that side, and I could easily park something back to where it's not visually obstructing anybody else. It would actually be better than me parking in the garage driveway, and it wouldn't necessarily have to have a carport or a garage leading to that area. That's part of what that big side yard was all about, is allowing some of that flexibility. So, I would ask in your consideration to think about that kind of flexibility as you discuss this item. I certainly don't envy these discussions. These are hard discussions. You've got a lot of competing interests on both sides, and I yield my time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
We can't comment directly on what you have brought before us, but please know that we are considering all of that. And I wanted to thank everybody that came out to explain their positions on this, and the zero-lot line was actually an interesting addition to the considerations that I hadn't considered yet. So, you're heard, and we appreciate you coming up.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to also reiterate the same thing that Councilmember Rocky Rhodes said. Sorry, Rocky, I couldn't think there for a second. And I appreciate everyone coming out, and thank you, Shannon, for the lot line. I hadn't heard about that either. We'll be able to talk a lot more about this when we get to the item, so we can be a little bit more open on there. And so, when we get there, you'll hear a little bit more of our information and ideas from each of us. So, thank you.
Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. I lend my voice to the appreciation for your being here, and also wanted to thank the email, the writers, people who've also sent in and want to know that we've read them and are reading them, and are very much aware of all of the many different interests and thoughts. I did have a question for our city attorney with regards to, I appreciate Mr. Kane coming and discussing. We can't, you asked if there are any questions. Unfortunately, we can't ask you in this timeframe. But my question, though, actually has to do with HOA restrictions on RVs, whether they can, I just want to make sure I'm accurate. It's correct that certainly C-Law applies to everything, but HOAs can choose to be more restrictive than what the state or what the city has decided. Is that an accurate statement? But not more lenient?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there just because I think it's an interesting, but thank you for sharing your thoughts about what your HOA is currently enforcing and doing. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out too. And I want to thank the 10 or 12 people, I think it was 12, that emailed me on this issue. It's a very important issue, and I do want to get it solved tonight. It's been a while. I know it's been frustrating. But I also want people to understand because there was a lot of complaints in the email about parking cars. And those have nothing to do with RVs. So, any derelict cars parking yards should still be enforced under the Parking section. So, don't be afraid to call the police on those. Number two, HOAs, they are able to do stuff stricter than the city because everybody in the HOA agrees to that. That's what you have to take into account, is they choose to live in an HOA. The city of Simi Valley is not an HOA. Thanks.
Likewise, I want to thank everybody for all the emails and, you know, sharing your opinions on stuff. When I think in our discussion, you'll see that, you know, we've taken a lot of time to review this, and we'll discuss it now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions this evening for your consideration.
Mayor, I'd like to have just a little discussion on Item 4, if we could, please. But happy to move consent on the other three items, if we would like to do that.
I'll second consent on Items 1 through 3. Councilmember Litzter. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so your question on Item 4?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, mainly because we also received some correspondence about it, and I wanted to be sure that it wasn't glossed over, that we'd actually discussed it. The item is approval of funds for purchase of mobile, of the portable radios, et cetera, mobile radios, to upgrade the system, particularly for our, this is just a portion of it, if I'm understanding correctly. I thought we all did.
There was an email.
There was an email.
That included that in it.
It wasn't the main part. It was just, it was, it was just one, a few sentences. Basically, asking about the amount, and I think you've made it very clear that it needs to be upgraded. I have no questions, but I just wanted to clarify that half of this is being paid for grants, and half of it, well, I just wanted to be, one of the questions was with regards to the bidding process. Could you maybe just speak to the matter in which this was, which was decided, or that it was?
So, the acquisition of these is through a cooperative agreement. We are piggybacking on another agency's bid that they conducted for the equipment. So, that agency did the bidding, and so, we are piggybacking upon their favorable pricing.
Excellent. And this is just a portion for the, for the, for safety for our police. Is that correct? But we know that it's going to be, for the entire city, there's more to be, that ultimately will be part of the system.
Correct. There's much more coming. So, this is, we're taking advantage of an opportunity to get the radios and equipment strictly for the police department because they have a particular, they want the Motorola type of equipment. We are currently out on RFP on all the other equipment and everything else that we should, are they coming back, Carolyn, within the next 60 days, I think? So, the rest of the bid will be coming back in about 60 days on the rest of the radio system.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I just wanted that stated so it was understood by all. Appreciate it.
I move to approve consent, Item 4.
A second.
Call for vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, there are no items this evening not under Continued Business. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, Request for Direction on Enforcement of Residential On-Site Parking Standards, Including Recreational Vehicles. And Deputy Environmental Services Directors Sean Gibson and Mara Maltz are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. When the city incorporated in 1969, parking in front and side yard setbacks of residential properties was prohibited. Over the years, the City Council has amended the municipal code to expand parking options to allow for parking of vehicles in side yard setbacks, allow for an extended driveway, allow for vehicles to be parked in a driveway leading to a permitted rear yard garage or carport, and on circular driveways. Additionally, there was an additional rear yard option depending on appropriate access from the side of the property or from the side yard directly adjacent to the primary driveway, added most recently. Past City Council direction to staff was only to respond to complaints and not to initiate onsite parking enforcement on staff observations alone. This enforcement posture allowed for a significant number of violations to exist for many years and has eroded at the community's understanding of allowable parking locations. The lack of enforcement does not allow for a pathway to classify those violations as legal non-conforming uses, which is commonly referred to as grandfathering. In 2018, the city's code enforcement staff received a significant number of complaints concentrated in one neighborhood. Those complaints were verified, and enforcement action was initiated, which resulted in community outreach to the City Council regarding the parking standards. The City Council placed enforcement on hold and reviewed the standards in November 2021, and added the additional rear yard parking option. And that was despite the Planning Commission recommending against modifying any of the parking standards. However, once outreach began to inform the community that enforcement would resume, a portion of the community again expressed concerns about the existing standards being enforced, and the City Council again paused enforcement in April 2022. Code enforcement has continued to receive complaints during the enforcement pause and frustration about the lack of enforcement of the existing standards. To reiterate, the City Council currently, or the city currently allows a number of parking options, which is generally more generous than surrounding communities. To summarize, in 1969, you could only park in the front-load or side-loaded driveway only. In 1986, side yard parking and the extended driveway options were added. In 2000, RVs and oversized, and other oversized vehicles were prohibited from on-street parking over 24 hours, and all vehicles were limited to 72 hours parked in the same location on the street. In 2011, a rear yard garage or carport options were added, including on the driveway leading to those locations, and they added provisions for circular driveways. In 2021, additional rear yard options with access from the side of the property or from the side yard adjacent to the primary driveway were also added. To give a visual, this is an image of what the community would have looked like as it relates to parking and street frontage at the time the city was incorporated. At that time, parking locations were limited to the primary driveways for a front loaded or side loaded garage. Please note that in these images, the blue vehicles indicate permissible parking locations, and in later slides, the red indicates locations that are not currently allowed under the city's municipal code. As mentioned earlier, over time, there have been revisions to the standards to allow additional parking options. In the 1980s, the 10-foot extension to the driveway to the closest property line, with or without a curb cut, was allowed. Additionally, at that time, side yard parking was allowed on either side of the house and did not and still does not require a curb cut or a paved approach. Not requiring appropriate access has created confusion and allowed for curb jumping and possible conflicts with street parking. Currently, paving is allowed when landscape standards, additional paving is allowed in the front yard when landscape standards can be met, but paving itself does not indicate that it is a permissible parking location. In 2011, circular driveways were also added as an option with an encroachment permit and maintaining those landscaping standards. Oversized vehicles, including RVs, are not allowed to park in the circular portion of the driveway as indicated by the red vehicle in the image on the right. Additional changes were made in 2011 to allow parking in a driveway leading to a permitted rear yard garage or carport. In those circumstances, the vehicle can be parked in the front yard setback as indicated as the blue vehicle in the image on the left. In 2021, the City Council added additional rear yard parking options that do not require a rear yard garage or carport. The most recent rear yard option allows for parking in the rear yard with access from the side of the property or the side yard adjacent to the primary driveway. This image illustrates the current allowable parking options and the corresponding impact on the curb and street parking options. As you can see, the additional options, depending on how the parking locations are accessed, may have an additional impact to the availability of street parking or create conflict with street parking when there is no curb cut. Commonly observed violations include oversized vehicles in the circular portion of the driveway or vehicles parked in the front yard opposite the main driveway. Additionally, there are often vehicles parked in the rear yard in an unapproved location or in the front yard in various locations, especially at homes that had paving done prior to the 2005 landscaping standards being adopted. The front yard, generally speaking, is any area not contained within the envelope of the building to the front of the house, and same for the rear yard. Side yards are areas on the side of the main structure, which for side loaded garages would be the area behind the garage adjacent to the home, and not where the red car is parked in the image on the right. As you can see, the more parking configurations that are allowed, the greater the impact there is to the street parking availability. And when you look at the progression of the original parking standards from the image on the left, from the 1960s, and then going to the 1980s and 2010 revisions, and then the commonly seen parking scenarios that we see today, there has been a significant shift of the on-street parking locations available to all residents to additional onsite parking for the single property or parking locations that can readily create conflict with the street parking due to the lack of required curb cuts and appropriate access. It should be noted that the size of a standard vehicle has increased over time, which already leads to fewer vehicles being able to park on the streets. And since COVID-19, there has been a visible increased demand on street parking within our community. The following are some options available to the City Council to address onsite residential parking. Allow additional rear yard parking for all sized lots. Allow additional rear yard parking for lots of a certain size with proper access. Allow opposite side driveway parking and providing, providing direction on curb cuts, which may require additional modifications to landscaping requirements. Removing front yard landscaping and parking restrictions on arterial streets, which are our main busy streets such as Royal, Cochran, LA Avenue, Alamo. Remove vehicle restrictions for circular driveways. Remove the on-street parking restrictions for RVs and other oversized vehicles. Or to resume enforcement of the existing standards as they currently are in the municipal code with a renewed education campaign of three months to allow for residents to make other accommodations for their vehicles not currently located in permissible locations. This concludes the report. Staff is requesting direction on the enforcement of the residential parking standards and is available for any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I don't think I was on the council at the time, but I remember watching a presentation where we, there was a discussion about RV being able, or something be able to park behind the house, not directly on the drive back to a rear garage. Does that apply to the RV parking that we're talking about now?
So to clarify, that does, we're talking about all parking standards. So this is not, RVs tend to be the most contentious part of it, but this applies to any parking location, so it's for any type of vehicle. So I just want to clarify that upfront. But that would allow for additional RV parking, but there are some limitations to that. That was adopted in, I think it was November of 2021, which allowed for, if you had, such as the image up on the screen, if you had side property line access, so if you had a street, like if you were on a corner property, you could access it from the side. Or if you had a property. Find the right image. Such as this, that you could extend where that blue car is in the side yard. If you could extend that back, that would also be a permissible parking location for a vehicle in the rear yard, as long as it was paved.
As long as it was paved.
And I'll just clarify that there's a 400 square foot allowance for that rear yard parking area, or 800 square feet in like one acre size lots or greater.
And is that a percentage of backyard paved? Like in the front yard, there's a?
You could pave your entire backyard, but the, we defined the rear yard parking area as a 400 square foot approved area, so we didn't, at the time, not cover the whole property with vehicles.
Got it.
Mayor Pro Tim Judge. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you. Just some general questions, so I can understand. With, as I understand, with regards to curb cuts, et cetera, right now, you could pave a side. Right now, basically, only the driveway has to be curb cut. Is that correct? You could, other access or other paved areas don't necessarily have to be curb cut. Is that correct?
Correct. So the code allows multiple parking locations that do not require an additional curb cut, but that presents other issues.
Sure.
Such as accessing the side yard opposite driveway, and then not being able to get your vehicle out because someone's parked on the street.
Sure.
And the only other area that would require a curb cut is that rear yard option from the side of your property that would require, and that was the most recent.
And that would require the curb cut, otherwise, okay. So I understand that 50% front yard has to be landscaped or not. I mean, only 50% can be cemented. Is that an accurate statement?
For those that want to make those modifications today, any properties that were paved prior to 2005 could have complete paving, and there was no landscaping standards in place at that time.
Got it. And that gets, that's my question. So pre-2005, that's in essence grandfathered in as far as the paving that already occurred?
Correct.
Okay. Going back to the curb cut discussion. If we, let's say we said that we allowed a driveway or a parking pad on the opposite side of the driveway, opposite side of the front. And I, you've discussed the potential problems. If we don't require a curb cut, if there's damage to the curbs, for instance, I mean, obviously, there's lifts and things, wedges that can be used to get up and et cetera. But if there is damage to the curb, is there a liability from the homeowner? Do, is that assessed? Is that part of, is that something that the city has enforcement on if there's damage created?
In our staff level discussions, it's my understanding that the current property owner could be held responsible, but it would also take additional staff resources to identify and pursue that responsibility.
Got it. Okay. Is there, in the law, is there a current setback distance that the RV must be from the curb? For instance, is five feet, six feet, 10 feet? I mean, I understand there, that from the, I'm just thinking safety, from the edge of the road.
No, it's simply in a permissible parking location, so as long as the vehicle is fully contained and not encroaching on the right of way, so it can't go over into the walking path that is part of your driveway apron. And something to note, that the vehicle standards have changed greatly. So we talk about RVs being these large vehicles, but there's a number of SUVs and trucks that pose similar issues. So I know there's been a request from some residents to have a setback. If there was a setback, many of our driveways wouldn't accommodate our standard vehicles that we all drive today.
Are there setbacks for other things? Well, for instance, fencing and hedges. What are, what currently are on the books?
There are, I believe it's 30, what is it, 42 inches for hedges and fences?
42 inches for hedges.
That's height or that's distance from the curb?
That's height. However, that's also in areas that currently do not allow vehicle parking, because that's the front yard setback. So those provisions are holding a consistent standard of not having obstructions in those areas. So by not allowing a vehicle and minimizing the fence and hedge height, it's maintaining that visibility in what is considered, under the code, the front yard setback.
Okay. So currently, what is the distance, then, just so I understand? What is standard distance, like in that picture, from the edge of the sidewalk to the front, which is where they couldn't park? How many feet are we talking about?
I would defer to Sean, but I think it's important to note it would depend on what year the home was developed. So our older homes have a much shorter driveway approach than some of our newer properties. And then there's estate lots and other planned communities that have a wide variation.
Got it. That makes sense.
Sean may be able to provide more of a distance.
Okay.
I think they're generally about, a driveway's generally about 20 feet.
Driveways generally about 20 feet, but from the distance from the sidewalk to the, to the road is what, five feet, maybe? That's what I'm really going to?
Oh, okay. That's 10 feet.
So it's a sidewalk and a, and a parkway.
Thank you.
That's usually 10 feet.
10 feet. Okay, okay. And another question, and I'm just about done. If someone wanted to pave a, something on the side, do they need to get a, pull a permit to do so, or is that permissible without a permit?
To pave for opposite side driveway access?
Well, opposite side, or maybe for landscaping, they chose to put pavement in.
Since 2005, a zoning clearance is required for any additional paving done in the front yard to ensure that the 50% landscaping maintenance, the 50% landscaping standard is maintained.
Okay. I wanted to be sure that I understood that. Okay. Okay. Thank you. And I certainly have thoughts, but I know that, well, let's go through all the questions and, yeah.
Well, I guess, you know, I put a lot of thought to this, and I appreciate both sides of this issue. One concern that was brought to me by numerous people is the fact that I believe currently a vehicle can be parked right up to the sidewalk, correct? That's the limit? It cannot?
Correct.
It can go right up to, but not?
Encroaching upon.
Encroaching on that, and the concern there was visibility. In other words, if, you know, somebody in the adjacent driveway is pulling out and they can't see someone coming down the sidewalk. But the part I didn't think about was your comment, the fact that the shorter driveways and the issue that would cause. I don't know what the resolution is there.
I'll go after you.
You going questions or comments?
Comments. Go first.
Okay. I just want to point some stuff out real quick. First of all, the 50% landscaping thing, I would like to see that changed, like it drop down to 30 or even 20%. Because for the last year, we've been telling people to kill their front yards. And what's, what's the point? I don't like seeing weeds. I don't like seeing the desert landscapes kind of stuff. I'd rather see a nice paved, maybe, you know, pavers in the driveway or something like that. Or artificial turf, something like that. I don't want to see, I don't like desert landscaping, and I don't like the weeds. They call natural California landscaping. So, that being said, I think the 50%, it's like I said, we're, another, let's, I'm dealing with people's property here. I'm not talking about HOAs. HOAs, if you live there, you've got to abide by your HOA's rules, and that's just the way it is. I'm talking about people that, like I did, that came to the city and bought a house that was not in an HOA on purpose. I don't like people telling me what to do with my property. If I could legally do it on my property, I want to be able to do it. So that being said, on a couple of these images I looked at, let's start with, let's go back to your evolution slide real quick. So I wanted to show something, want to talk about something that was on there.
The bullet point?
Yeah, it was just the evolution of the bullet point slide. Maybe I already covered it. No, it doesn't come up here. All right. Thanks. This is one thing I wanted to point out, is the 2000 rule we have here. We've always, and I have no problem with this at all, because I don't think RVs, no, the problem with RVs, if you own one, you should be able to put it on your property, or have the money to put it in a storage lot. That's, you know, comes with the, comes with the fact of owning an RV. To think you're going to buy an RV and park it on the street? No. That's, that's a no-go. Number one, because that's not parking on the street, that's storing it on the street. Unless you drive that RV daily, which I doubt, uh-uh, not parking it on the street. If we go to image 7 on your little things here.
I have the bigger ones here.
Perfect. Thank you. On image 7, see now this slide, I really don't have a problem with this, the two red, the bus, got the RV back here and the car in front of it. I'm really curious as to what the problem is with those two vehicles. Now, there's one parked in front of the house, I'm going to give, I don't have, I don't like that either. Like, I don't like the RVs being parked on the circular driveways either. So I'm just looking for something like that. That's the only amendment I'd ask on that photo, is that those two, these two be allowed, because we're already allowing it in other cases. But this red car, yeah, I agree with that one. It should not be there. I mean, it should not be there. And that comes from those. Yes, that car should, should not be there. The other two should be allowed. Forgot to have this. Dangerous. And, and this comes, see, that's what I'm talking about right now. I'm going to go into that right here, because if you look at this lot, logically, you could bring that RV into the one curb cut that you have, that's been permitted when the house was built. And you can maneuver that RV to that space where it's at, on the property itself, without having to have a second curb cut. And I believe if you have the room on your property to do that, you should not have to get a curb cut, and that should be allowed. That's my opinion. And my second point is, you know, and I don't, I don't like to belabor this fact, but I was in law enforcement for 31 years. In those 31 years, I never saw somebody take their $200,000 RV and curb bounce it over the curb. Normally, they use something to get the thing up the curb or something like that, and I've never responded to a call where the homeowner has damaged their curb with their RV. I'm not saying it doesn't happen. I'm just saying it's very rare, very rare. These people are very delicate with those RVs. Those RVs are not cheap. Please, we go to image 10. Thank you. Now, this one, again, no bueno, having that car parked on the grass, no. That's not right. And like I said, that goes along with what I said earlier during public comments. If you see derelict cars on the property, that is not allowed. It's not allowed by state law, let alone Simi Valley's law. If you have derelict cars on your property, they're supposed to be not there, especially not being seen from the public. That one over there, I don't see the problem with that. Again, because he can maneuver that car there. Oh, sorry. Yes. That car can be maneuvered there with the original curb cut, not having to have anything else done to the property. So I don't see a problem with that. That one, though, especially if it's a derelict, not moving, big problem. Don't want to see that. that.
Wait a minute.
Parking your car in the grass is, this isn't Alabama.
To the street, which you didn't like on the other slide.
What's that?
It's perpendicular to the street, which on the other slide, you didn't like.
Well, I didn't like it, I don't like this one specifically, because it's parked on the grass. That's it, right there, that's my big thing. So if you're going to have a yard, you don't want to park a car on it.
Oh, no.
And my other problem with the slides on the red cars, and I see slide six. Thank you. This one too, I see that as long as you can maneuver that vehicle from this curb cut to that driveway on that property, I don't see an issue with that car being parked there. Not a bit.
Pardon? Bouncing the curb is okay?
I'm not saying to bounce the curb. I'm saying if you can maneuver on your property as it exists right now, I mean, if you drive over your own lawn, that's your issue, you're going to have to fix your own lawn. If you drive over your own, if you don't have lawn, if you've done what the state wanted you to do for the last year, and you just have rocks and weeds, like most of the houses in the city, drive over that and put the car there, that should be just fine. If the city is permitted, if you can, if you want to apply for a permit for a curb cut, good luck. I mean, that's another thing we're looking at here, is with the influx of the state regulations on housing and everything else we're going to have coming forward, we're going to have a lot more people parking on streets. I mean, it's just a gimme, and unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about it up here on the city council. They've mandated certain restrictions for apartment buildings, that they say they have a low-income component, they don't have, some of them don't have to have any parking. City of LA is building apartment buildings with zero parking in the building. Where are those, you know, because they're under some fantasy that these people aren't going to take public transportation, it's not going to happen. They're going to end up parking on the street. So if we have too many curb cuts in town, that takes away our street parking. And I get it, nobody wants people that, you know, it's always uncomfortable if somebody parks in front of your house, especially if you don't know who they are. But it's going to be happening, just going forward in California. So unless, I don't know what the permitting process is for curb cuts right now, but you probably have to have a pretty good reason to get one. But with this property, the way it's showed right here, there shouldn't be a problem with moving that car around to that driveway without having to have a second curb cut. Those are my comments, and that's where I'm at on this. I'm just looking at it like, I don't want to see, I don't want to see people that specifically, like myself, moved to this town because it was a friendly town, it was a safe town, and, you know, get treated like you're living in an HOA, when you're not. To tell somebody they can't do something like that on their property, that's a little weird to me. Now, again, I'm not in favor of having, but I'm ever going to tell somebody they can't have it, I'm not in favor of seeing like three boats on the yard that aren't being used, or something like that. But if they're able to be parked properly on the property, and they're abiding by all the California regulations that we have to abide by, and our city regulations, that's the way it goes. Those are my three big concerns there on those slides and what we're doing today. Thanks.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of similarities to Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Judge, but I just had a couple of different questions, so not all houses, like on the zero lot line, have the ability to park an RV on the side of their garage. So I'm in agreement with allowing a secondary side, but I don't want, I'm looking at it where I don't think we should have an RV on both sides, so, because of the height, more than anything else. So we discussed, when we have setbacks, the heights have to be four inch, or four feet to partial on the hedges and such, correct?
In the front yard setback.
Okay, I'm just going, these are my thoughts, so this is kind of what I've been looking at. So I've seen where somebody has a pavement on the opposite side of the garage, and they have it nicely landscaped, and they have their RV back from the sidewalk, about six to eight feet. I don't know that we have to go six to eight feet, but I would like to, if we're going to allow a secondary pad on the side of the house that's not in the garage, I would like a setback of some type, two to four feet, just to make sure that that RV vehicle is not also at the sidewalk, because it's not how we design the streets. You know, the streets are designed to where the sidewalks are now, so in this particular case, what I'm thinking of is they have it parked back a little bit farther, they even put some landscaping in between their yard and their neighbors as a courtesy to their neighbor. You know, just some bushes to kind of alleviate the massiveness of an RV. So depending on your situation, I would like to see that type of a thing, and maybe, not mandatory, but in the thought process. So I think I wrote down, motorized vehicles always need a full pad. In the past, a non-motorized did not, does that still exist?
It doesn't have to be on a concrete surface, but it does have to be on like a gravel or granite type surface.
Okay, so that's already there? Okay. I was going to say just the cement slabs both side with no gravel, but if we're already allowing that, that's fine. The two to four foot minimum setback on the side, I know we're allowing it on the driveway side up to the walkway, but if we're going to put a secondary pad on, I would like to see possibly, you know, making at least a minimum two-foot setback, so that it's not right on the sidewalk also, otherwise you get straight, you're going to get bulk on both sides of the house. I also, I mentioned the one vehicle, RV, I don't think we should have RVs on both sides, or at least height restricted wise. A boat, you can usually get down the sides, a little bit smaller than an RV. I actually have RV access, but I don't have an RV, so. But paving restrictions, zoning, and the zoning permit with the landscaping, I agree. The 50% is a wishful, I really do at this point in time. I think we should possibly lower that, especially with all the standards on our watering. And then I also had a question of corners. If you live on a corner, I've seen two different people's homes, I actually know the one, the one family, the other one I don't, I live near it, they have done a great job on landscaping their corners, putting their RVs there, and not making it, and making it look nice. It's their home, so they want it to look nice. So being on a corner, they're limited, they don't have parking even in front of their house, because they're on that curve, so they've done the best that they can on both of these locations, and I actually think they're very nice. So I think that needs to be some consideration for that, when there is a limited amount of parking and access to their yards. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I think for a corner lot, the one issue that I foresee is accessing that corner lot location for the parking and using the handicap ramp, which I believe is a violation of state law.
Okay, both the ones I see are coming through their driveway.
Okay.
But no, so that's a good point, I forgot, yes, we don't want them going down those sidewalks, because they're also not made for that weight, okay? And I agree with, or Mayor Pro Tem Judge, you don't take your RVs just flat off the curb, you know, my family has RVs, my dad, so you're going to put blocks if nothing else there, and now they have really nice metal ramps that you can kind of go up and down, so I agree with that. Curb cuts, yes, will take away parking. Most people with an RV in their yard, whether it's on the side or their garage side, usually know when they're going to be moving out, and they usually know who's in front of their house to move their, asked to move a car. We had to do that, I was storing, my daughter was living with me for a month while they redid their yard, so her RV, her trailer was in my driveway, and we needed to move it out, and whose car is that? Well, it's not there, okay, it's got to be theirs, you know, so most people in their general vicinity will be able to figure out whose car needs to be moved. And if it's there for 72 hours, you can report cars online if they haven't moved in 72 hours, I've done it. So it is available to do that, or cars that are flat tires and that type of a thing. RPD will take care of it for you, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Those are just my comments for right now.
Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think that there is some consensus among us in some ways. I had written down my thought process or my thoughts coming into this, and I want to go back to the discussion of some of the speakers about equity and enforcement, etcetera. I do believe that whatever we decide tonight, etcetera, on the books, I think there should, I think it's, if you're going to have code, it's appropriate to be enforced and fairly. And we'll come to that decision tonight, I'm sure where we stand. I concur that opposite side parking ought to be allowed with the permitted, if it is paved appropriately, and it makes sense. But I also agree that an RV should only be allowed on one side, not both. And so if we are going to, if we are going to consider opposite side parking, then I think it should be somewhere in the code that only one side can be used for a big vehicle, RV vehicle. But I agree that I would not require curb cut, so parking is not affected, and I appreciate understanding that if curbing is damaged, then we, the city should be able to find a way to get it paid for, the repair should be paid for. But I concur that certainly RV owners have, take great care and generally in putting their vehicles on or off their pads, on or off their property. I liked your thought, Councilmember Kavanaugh, that if we are going to allow it on the opposite side of the driveway, on the opposite property side, that we might consider some kind of a setback, that it not be all the way to the sidewalk as well, that, and some of that, I think, has to do with safety. I don't know, five to eight feet, obviously, that would be limiting for some who's, maybe are close, whose homes are close to the property line, but I do think that there is a concern to look at, that we should be aware of. I was thinking, as I was looking at this issue, I was trying to understand, what is the reason for the code? Is it about aesthetics? Is it about maintaining property values? Is it about making sure equitable access for people? Is it about saving our streets? I just was trying to, I was trying to understand really, the reason for the code, and...
It could be all of the above.
It could be all of the above. And so I guess because it could be all of the above, that's why we are considering and discussing this, from all of those, from all of those lenses. Because I certainly understand, when you own property, you want to be able to do whatever you want with it. However, if it impinges on your neighbor or property values, I guess, you know, there's reasons why we do have some restrictions on property ownership, but anyway, looking at, I concur as far as my, as Councilor, or Mayor Pro Tem Judge was suggesting, he was, I concur with him on image seven, that they ought to be able to park. On image 10, I think what the mayor was trying to suggest is that parallel parking in front of the house is a visual problem, and so I'm not quite sure that I would, I don't necessarily agree with, at least, maybe a car is okay, but an RV, no. I think that's problematic, at least in that instance. In fact, as I was, you know, as knowing we were discussing this, I'm sure all of us have been looking very carefully at all the homes as we drive by. We just do, we do. And I did see an RV parked on grass in front of their house, right in front, and I thought, oh, that probably is not, what's that?
Actually, having a motorized RV on your grass is a state violation.
Right, and anyway, so, I recognize there's a reason we're discussing this tonight. So anyway, those are, those are my thoughts, but probably I would move that we consider, when the time comes, that allowing it on the opposite side only, but it becomes one or the other.
So I'm listening to the discussion, and I think that there might be some additional stuff that we have to think about, in terms of number of vehicles or toys or things that would be in the front yard. I went, thank you for everybody that sent in letters that had addresses, I went and visited and drove by some of those. And I witnessed one property that was not mentioned in the letter, but it was in the neighborhood, and it was an RV parked appropriately, and four cars in, managed to get double parked in the driveway. And so four cars, the RV, and they were, you know, cars on the street in front, so it actually looked like a car lot. And I think that the, if we're going to be expanding what we can do with our toys, a boat on one side, RV on the other, I think there should be some sort of recognition that visually, from the neighbor's standpoint, you could be decreasing property value if you're just parked full. As far as the landscaping goes, if we're going to reduce the percentage of landscaping required in the front yard, then I would probably caveat what Mayor Pro Tem Judge said about if you can get there, not driving over the yard. If, you would need to get some sort of paving, gravel, something mechanism to get over there, because driving over the yard, while you might think it's fine in your front yard, it's going to, you know, leaving ruts will decrease the value of the neighbor's property as well, because it'll look like hell. So I think that we should be mindful of the visual impact on the neighbors as we make these decisions.
I guess one thing I'm not sure of, do we currently allow an RV and a boat?
Currently, it's a permissible parking location. There's no, so there's a few points that I think it would be prudent for the council to be aware of. If we start specifying areas that are allowed to be a parking location, they're a parking location, with the exception of circular driveways is a very specific section of the code that's been narrowly defined to not allow oversized vehicles. So if you allow parking in the primary driveway, and then you allow a directly adjacent extension, which the code allows today, and then you allow an additional opposite side driveway, you either allow oversized vehicles in each of those areas, or not at all. So you can't kind of pick and choose, and this was something that the Planning Commission, when they had a subcommittee to review proposed modifications, went into great detail and had a lot of discussion about, because you can't pick and choose, you know, a combination of parking scenarios, and everyone gets to choose their own combination. It's either that parking location allows for an oversized vehicle, or it does not. So that means you could have an RV in the 10-foot extension, you could have two RVs in the driveway, and you could have an RV on the opposite side driveway pad that you've now allowed. That's in terms of enforceability. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is in discussion of the setback for the opposite side driveway, that would be virtually impossible to enforce, those are transitory, that would require a ticketing program to enforce, that when we see the violation, we would have to be able to measure it from the right of way and verify that it's a violation, and then ticket that vehicle in the moment, which is currently not within the staff capacity of code enforcement, and I doubt that the police department would want to take on that additional, on top of the unpaved and the inoperable and the street parking that they currently do ticketing for. So those are just things to consider, I'm not saying that we can't adopt the standards such as that, but the expectation for enforceability may be different than the practicality and the resources available to enforce. So I hope that provides a little bit of clarity, but the front yard setback would have to be clearly and objectively defined, and each parking location would have to have specific standards as they apply, and then those standards would apply uniformly across all properties that have that parking location available to them. I hope that's clear.
Yeah, if I can just jump in real quick. So Mara, on the second, I'm not sure which, the one that has the vehicle on the opposite side, that's fine. The red car on the far, at the top, that would have to be two or three feet from the back of the sidewalk.
If that's, if that's the standard that was...
So we could, as we do with code enforcement issues, when we measure fencing or hedges that are, have to be so many feet behind, or inches behind back of the sidewalk, we could do the same thing with that and just cite them in the same way.
We could, it's just that fences and hedges don't move, and vehicles do.
Correct, and it could be different.
So we could, it just would be more staff intensive.
You could go by four times and be different every four times. So that is possible, but we could cite in that way.
Correct, but it would definitely, in the years of the enforcement pause, there's definitely a lot of community concern on both sides of the fence, so I'm not advocating for one position or the other, but it creates an expectation that we're going to be able to make that move, that neighbor permanently move their vehicle, and someone who doesn't want to be a good neighbor and abide by the rules, isn't going to do so. Such as the violations that we currently have within the community, like the red car parked in front of the front driveway in this image, they're not currently allowed to do that, but people are doing that. So the violations will persist, it's just that we'll have to pursue enforcement and not likely have a positive response for someone who is defiant.
And one other thing to chew on is, when we talk about enforcement, is we normally work on a complaint basis. We get a complaint, we go out there, we look at that vehicle that's been complained about. We don't usually go down the street and look at everything else. If there is a desire for the council to do more proactive enforcement, we don't necessarily have the manpower to drive down every residential street, but if we're called to that street, we can do enforcement on that street, and that, we could set that as a policy of, if we're set to Main Street, we will look at the vehicles on Main Street, and we won't look beyond that, otherwise, we're going to, we would have to increase staff in order to do something like that. The reason why the curb cut is important, and the council may recall, or the, maybe not, the newer two members, is we've had numerous claims of people that have been injured because of broken sidewalks from vehicles driving over the curb, broken water meter boxes that have been broken, and people falling into the water meter boxes. So it is, it is a concern on our part where... into the water meter boxes. So it is, it is a concern on our part where we, if we have a damaged sidewalk, or a damaged piece of property that someone falls in because someone is, is driving over the curb, and they may do it with ramps, but what they're driving over, once they get off the street, can cause damage, we end up getting a claim for it. And we can avoid that with curb cuts. You have to weigh that with the, as Mayor Protem Judge indicated, the lack, the reduced, the reduced amount of street parking, that would be part of it. And we would certainly go after any homeowner that does damage on those things, but we would have to be able to catch it before it becomes an issue. Although, among the issues that we're, it's not easy. And those are among the issues we're trying to grapple with.
I have one, just one more quick question for Mara. If we were to allow the second side, the side opposite the garage parking, could we limit it to one vehicle? In other words, I don't want, I don't think we're looking to put in the extra pad on the one side, and then have five cars parked there.
So if that was a specific code section, allowing it unique and independent from the existing opposite side that leads to a rear garage or carport, then yes.
You could limit it to one.
But right now, there is a pre-existing where if you have a driveway opposite of your main driveway, leading to the rear garage or carport, there's no limitation on those vehicles. And those individuals would allow to continue to park the number of vehicles there that they want.
That would be one that goes all the way to the back.
Yeah.
Right. So, but if we're talking just in the front, then we could limit it to one.
We could limit it to one.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to understand better the first point you were making. Are you saying that because we've already allowed for RV, et cetera, multiple things parked on the driveway side, you're saying that we couldn't tonight, for instance, say, yes, we'll let you park on the other side as well, but you may only have one RV, or only one vehicle over 12 feet, whatever it is? Are you saying that we can't make that, make, change, or modify the code to make that statement?
It's my understanding that the way the code is written, and David may correct me, but the way that the code is written is that each area has to have objective standards, each provision. So you can't couple multiple, each one of these has been an evolution of the code. So it has a new code section that's allowing this, or a subsection of a code section that's allowing the additional parking. So to couple those together and say, in a combined capacity, you can only have X number of oversized vehicles, I don't think would be feasible.
The goal is to avoid, to have an ordinance that is objectively reasonable, and avoid an argument that there is a unequal application to different types of vehicles and situations. So you want to draft an ordinance that is as solid as possible.
But we could say something, just like this photo here, is we could allow parking of the two vehicles, as long as the one is behind the house.
Yes, you can.
The one is on the side of the house there, that, the RV obviously, is in a position where it's adjacent to, or behind the house, because it's right there on the side. The one parked in front of it, that would be the one you say there's only one car allowed to be parked in front. And that would be it. But the car that's parked parallel to the front of the house there is, is not, not approved. I was looking at the list on here, since it's just pretty much open discussion right now. It's got a couple of things. But one of the things I think we have a consensus on is allowing the parking on the opposite side of the driveway. The kicker there is the curb cut. Now, I know Brian's seen some stuff, but I, like I said, I've never seen it. And that would be something, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do, then we'd have to allow curb cuts, which would be fine. I mean, it just takes away the parking on the street.
Yeah, we can certainly allow them, but if you don't want to mandate them, that's fine.
I would say we just go after aggressively people that damaged the curb or the sidewalk. That would be the best thing, in my opinion. Because, like I said, it's just something I've never, and I hate to contradict you like that, but I've never seen, I've never seen it. And I was a real estate appraiser. And by the way, before I became a police officer, I was a real estate appraiser for about five years. And never did I take into account on appraisal of a house, what their neighbor's RV size was, or where it was parked. Never. That was always never done. It was just you appraised things by their comparables in the neighborhood. It has nothing to do with the, with your neighbor's front yard, or anything like that. But that's just my, just throwing that out there. But everything else on this list, that's on the, by the way, great report, Mara. It's a great report, it's very comprehensive. Everything else on this list, I think we're all in agreement of, because we don't want to see people, you know, parking all their cars in the backyard. Just, I mean, I, I would just, in fact, my opinion, I'm a little more strict on it than that, that the only thing should be allowed behind the house is an RV, and not for living quarters, but for storage. That would be it. I wouldn't want to have a place where you could just, I don't want to have RVs parked behind houses being used as an ADU, in other words. Okay? And we also agreed on additional rear yard parking, certain size, proper access. I think as long as you have that driveway, and you like, you can get to it on your property. And again, part of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the landscaping of a front yard is also non-permanent pavers, is landscaping. Removing the front yard landscaping. I mean, I heard three councilmembers say that that sounds like a good idea, to lower the minimum, just to lower it to 30, I don't, something like that, especially with the drought stuff that we're all required to do. And the drought has receded this year, but, you know, Cuyagus has made it clear that the minute that the snowpack doesn't meet the expected level, that stuff's coming back.
Can I interject a question on that right now?
Sure.
Taking a look at this picture, let's just say the landscaping goes away. The car that's parallel to the front, if it maneuvered in and was not parallel, was facing the house, you could fit three more cars in there. And is that what we're talking about? Being able to use the entire front yard? Wow. I mean, that...
I wouldn't be against it.
If you paved it, right, you took the landscaping away, it fits. If it fits, why can't I do it?
Let us actually, doesn't have 30%.
Right, yeah.
Vegetary landscape. And I'm not talking about parking on pavers, because you can't park on pavers.
Right.
I would leave just the parking in the parking, in the driveway, if there's an adjacent spot there, and then the one spot over on the side.
The, the area in front of a garage door.
Correct.
And right now, I don't, I personally don't want to mess with the, although I understand your point about landscaping, I would prefer to keep that separate. I don't know that I want to try to change the landscaping percentage tonight. I think I'd like to leave it at 50 for now. We can revisit it another time.
But the problem with the second driveway, though, is if you have your landscaping limited at 50%, then most people that have done second driveways, whether illegal or legal, or whatever, how they've done it, it doesn't conform to the code.
Hmm. So we have to lower it at least somewhat.
And people have done it. I mean, I know there, you know, there was a time when people would say, you know, make a lot of noise about people doing that. But like I said, in the last year, we've been hammered, hammered. Just let your lawn die, let your lawn die. So people can't see the, the common sense in doing that, and not using their property for something purposeful, lack of a better word. And I think the 30% requirement is fair. I think a 30% requirement is doable, even if you want to put a second driveway in. Because there, like I said, you can maneuver on the pavers, you just can't park on them.
Sean, Mara, the idea is to get direction, and then, this is for potential prospective text amendment down the line.
Yes. If the direction is not to enforce the existing standards, which is not, not what I'm hearing, then we need more clarification on the text amendments for Sean and his staff to work on, and get community feedback and bring back.
Let me, let me see if I can summarize.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we've got parking on both sides, in the front yard, in the, in the front yard of the house.
The only thing about parking on both sides, and I think I heard it from Councilmember Kavanaugh myself, is that it should be either or. I am concerned if we have, you're saying there's absolutely no way you can do it.
But I, we can limit one vehicle on the second.
Yeah, so say, only one, only one vehicle. Now, do you...
And I would say, and, and it can only be an RV if, if one is not parked elsewhere. We, we could do it on the secondary side, we just can't do it on the first side. Right?
We can look at it.
You can, but we run into what's a, what defines an RV.
A height. I would say height, a vehicle over 12 feet, for instance. Or eight, 10 feet, I don't know.
If that's a council desire.
It's been a long time since I owned an RV.
It looks like that.
What, yes, why don't we let the city attorney and the city manager look at that?
And then, was there a desire for a setback on that side, from back of sidewalk?
I had that desire. I don't know if anyone else did. Two to four feet minimum. I mean, two feet's enough, at least, maybe.
Two feet from sidewalk?
Yeah. From sidewalk back, I think that, almost any yard. And some people are going to want to go back farther, anyway. The one I saw, it's back like six feet from the sidewalk. So...
I mean, there are, honestly, there will be vehicles that aren't going to make the setback. And they're probably, they're probably out there today.
Then they can park on the driveway side.
If they can.
I, I would like to at least attempt looking at that, and maybe we can look, I'll, I'll drive around and look at what some people have. Just, I'd, I'd like to at least attempt that. If we don't get it there, we don't get it there. But I'd like an attempt at it.
Is that one? You see, three nods? Okay.
I'm really not concerned with the setback. But if you want to, like a foot or something like that, would be fine. I mean, again, it's their property, vehicle's legally registered.
Yeah. I'm just seeing it more for the person walking by the, on the sidewalk.
I got you. I understand.
I didn't hear a consensus on requiring curb cuts, and that's fine.
Requiring them or not?
Not requiring.
Oh, yeah, I'm not required. Okay. Allowed if they want.
Yeah, we will certainly work with property owners in order to provide for them. There are limitations. You don't want a curb cut next to another curb cut.
Right.
So there are, we're going to have to have some discretion at our public works level when they, when they look at requests for, for curb cuts. But we can certainly allow them.
And then be curb cut at a property owner expense.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was too emphatic.
This is all property owner expense.
Having paid for an extended curb cut, I know how much they are, and I would probably park my RV in storage before.
Okay. And the enforcement part, we can get to that. That's, that's, that's a different issue. I did not hear a consensus on, on reduced landscaping, and Mayor Protem Judge was indicating 30%. I heard some other numbers, but we can certainly bring that back if we have some direction.
Maybe between 30 and 40, maybe give us an idea of what the difference would look like, on a slide?
We certainly can.
That might be easy. Mara, Mara can do anything.
I think if allowing...
Or Sean can do anything, okay.
Allowing parking on the second side would require it, we'd have to do something.
You're going to lose setback if you add that second, second pad. So it's going to have to, it's going to have to probably be reduced. Yeah. Is that enough direction? What am I missing?
I think there was also the rear yard option on opposite side driveway. So like on, on this slide, to accommodate the RV, there was some discussion about that.
Well, I'd want to allow that, too.
I think that was, yes, as long as the RV is behind the house, in the rear.
I'd even go as far as say, behind a fence.
Right.
Require a fence there.
Require a fence.
That's what mine, mine has.
Right. So the code would just have to be modified to allow that extension into the rear yard, because it currently limits it to the side yard. So that would be a text amendment. And then is that specific to recreational vehicles only? And the vehicle code, I think, provides a definition of recreational vehicles.
What I don't want our staff, honestly, is looking over the fence and determine what kind of vehicle is back there.
Because if somebody's got a Sprinter van, they've got it as a commercial vehicle, and converted it to an RV, it's not going to be called an RV on the DMV.
There you go. Yeah. So there are, so I think we have to look at it more as a vehicle, as opposed, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good?
I'd like to thank both Sean and Mara. This was a lot of work. So thank you for everything you put forward.
And Mayor Thomas, let me just reiterate, the next step would, would be to bring back an ordinance. There's a process to do that. Normally, it goes to the City Planning Commission for a recommendation to the City Council. We also have the four neighborhood councils. If you want to give direction, if we want to accelerate and bypass the councils, go straight to commission, then council, or if you want to take this to the four neighborhood councils.
I would say, since we made up all this stuff on the fly up here, it should just come back to us.
Yeah, I would say, let's, let's bring it back first to the council, and then we can narrow down what we're, what we would take out to Planning Commission and/or neighborhood council.
And then one last question, just to clarify on enforcement in the meantime, to resume enforcement on all areas not under consideration, based on the direction received tonight.
I'd agree with that.
I would agree with that. Yes. Thank you.
Just for the record, there was a clear consensus on that last point.
You want to vote?
No.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9B, Consideration of Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association. And Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. We'll just get set up here, so just give us one moment. Okay, good evening. The item before you is the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, or POA. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the City Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city, and providing compensation increases to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions, to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Representatives of the Simi Valley POA worked with the city's negotiating team toward an agreement that would accomplish these goals, and the proposed revisions to their MOA, MOU, I'm sorry, is before you for consideration. The agreement before you is for a 27-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years. A 6% salary increase would be effective April 10th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase would be effective April 8th, 2024. And then I will briefly review the additional proposed terms. The Simi Flex amount will remain at the 2022 plan levels, with no adjustments during the term of the agreement. The current rate that new members are paying for the normal cost of CalPERS has also been updated in the language. The capped annual final compensation has been updated for new members. The amount of PemCA has been updated for 2023. The city will continue to pay the minimum as required in 2024 and '25. All references to a side letter regarding 12-hour shifts for the traffic unit have been removed. The meal allowance has been updated to reflect city policy, and the reference to Lexi Poll has been removed. These are all minor language changes that do not reflect additional benefits or compensation. The primary change in the agreement would be the 10% salary increase. The tentative agreement for the total cost, this slide shows the two-year cost of the agreement to be $1,295,411.34. The slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement, and how much the cost is attributed to salary, and how much is attributed to At this time, it is recommended that the City Council consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this item on the April 3rd City Council agenda for final determination. Thank you for your time. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
I'm going to ask the question now, and it's going to be the same question for each of the upcoming agenda items. And I just want to, I want to phrase it this way, that I'm in support of the increase in the salary. But between this one and some other salary increase MOUs that we're going to be looking at, we're looking at about, for tonight, about $3 million over the next two years, in increase in salary. And I just wanted to ask, have we accounted for how we're going to pay for that? Are we going to, are we expecting increased revenues, or are we looking at decreasing expenses? How, how is it that we're going to make this balance?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in. I think, so let me, first off, start at the, not doing it would affect services from the city, because we're having challenges keeping employees and recruiting employees due to our salaries not being competitive. So I think not doing it will have an, an effect on services that we are providing, because we are, we're, 95% of our budget is service-oriented, and we're providing that service to the public. So it creates those challenges. On the revenue side, we are in the throes of preparing the budget for next year, and we have evaluated the revenue sources that we take a look at, and projecting out, we normally project about five years out. And based upon what we're seeing in sales tax, property tax, and some other smaller revenue sources, we see that the horizon would be of the... other smaller revenue sources, we see that the horizon would be able to easily accommodate these changes that are being proposed. We've also done a very good job, staff has done an incredible job over the last several years in managing expenditures and making sure that our expenditures are under control. That has helped us to create those opportunities that we've had over the last several years in, in developing budget surpluses that we've been able to last year, and you'll see it again this year, is to allocate out those surpluses into different areas. So I think the combination of all those things really points towards the need to do, to, to adopt these changes to the salary structures.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
May I make a motion? Thank you. I move to consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, with police unit employees represented by the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, the SVPOA, as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the MOU, and to place this matter on the agenda for April 3rd, 2023, for final determination on the proposed MOU.
Second.
Did I get a second?
I did. I seconded it.
Oh, okay. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9C, consideration of proposed revisions to the terms and conditions to the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association, and Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright will present this item as well.
Good evening. This will look familiar. The item before you is the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association, or PMA. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city, and providing compensation increases to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Representatives of the Simi Valley PMA worked with the city's negotiating team toward an agreement that would accomplish these goals and the proposed revisions to their MOU is before you for consideration. The agreement before you is for a 27-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years. A 6% salary increase would be effective April 10th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase would be effective April 8th, 2024. And I will briefly review the additional proposed terms. Simi Flex amount will remain at the 2022 plan year levels with no adjustments during the term of the agreement. The amount of Pemka has been updated for 2023. The city will continue to pay the minimum as required in 2024 and 2025. The current rate for SVPMA members are paying for the normal cost of PERS has also been updated. Language has been updated to reflect that Tier 2 sworn management members will pay the pepper member rate. Deputy chief title has been updated to assistant chief. The salary ranges for commander and assistant chief have been updated, and a side letter has been incorporated. Again, these are all language changes that do not have substantial benefit, I'm sorry, substantial changes to the MOA itself or MOU itself. The primarily, primary changes will be handled in the salary adjustments. The slide above shows the two-year cost for the agreement to be $195,199.97. The slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement and how much of the cost is attributed to salary, and how much of it is attributed to PERS. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this item on the April 3rd City Council agenda for final determination. Thank you for your time. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for questions.
Would you like a motion or some?
Well, I, I was going to say, I appreciate the, the question that was asked by Councilmember Rhodes. I think it's important that we understand it. And I wanted to be sure that it was clear that these motions are being made with the intention that the public can comment, and it, it comes back to the council, and that I want to make, make it very clear that it comes so people can, who have concerns or, or want to support, et cetera, can come back and address those at the next council meeting when it comes before us.
That's correct. And if staff receives any emails or any correspondence, we would incorporate that into the staff report for the council's consideration of this item at the next meeting.
Very good. Very good.
Councilmember Rhodes, did you want to include that prior question on this agenda as well? Okay. And so then my next question is, does Mr. Gable want to wish to incorporate by reference your prior response to the last agenda item?
Certainly.
And I'd be happy to make a motion on this one. If you'd like. I move to consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding with police management employees represented by the Simi Valley Police Managers Association, SVPMA, as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the MOU, and, secondly, place this matter on the agenda for April 3rd, 2023, for final determination on the proposed MOU.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9D, consideration of proposed revisions to the terms and conditions to the resolution for management-designated employees. And Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright will present this item as well.
Good evening. The item before you is the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions to the resolution for management-designated employees. The city's employees are divided into the following four groups for labor relations purposes: general unit employees, police unit employees, police management employees, and management-designated employees. Management-designated employees are not represented by an employee organization. While management-designated employees are not formally represented, staff meets with representatives from each department to better understand interests of employees and to share the city's financial forecasts as we did with each formal bargaining unit. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city, and provided compensation increase to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Staff has met with representatives from management, and the proposed revisions to their resolution that details employee benefits is before you for consideration. The resolution before you is for a 27-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years. A 6% salary increase effective April 10th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase effective April 8th, 2024. The Simi Flex amount will remain at the 2023 plan level with no adjustment during the term of the resolution. The slide above shows the cost for the agreement across all funds that would be impacted to be $2,083,980.94 across funds. The slide also breaks down, this next slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement and how much of the cost is attributed to salary, and how much is attributed to PERS. The total cost over the two years is a little over $2 million, as you can see. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council consider the proposed revisions to the management-designated employee resolution as presented, and give the public the opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this item on the April 3rd City Council agenda for final determination. Thank you for your time. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
Can I get a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to consider the proposed revisions to the management-designated employees resolution as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination, and place this matter on the City Council agenda for April 3rd, 2023, for final determination.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Maybe the shortest report in history. I had one meeting on March 8th where the mayor and I attended an orientation and walkthrough of the Parks Department and their facility. I want to thank Dan Perenek, Josh Gray, and Ed Abila for hosting us and sharing their thoughts and visualization, visualizing the future of the parks together. It was super informative and, and really kind of eye-opening how much park land we actually have around us. Other than that, I was traveling. I went to a professional association meeting and a continuing education meeting. The only business that I did is at the National Coffee Association, I pitched really hard that Simi Valley would be a great place to expand your businesses for either roasting or distribution of coffee. We'll see. And that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Littscher.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the pitch, Councilmember Rhodes. On Tuesday, March the 7th, I caught the tail end of the youth council meeting and appreciate all the work that's done there. And they were discussing the youth health fair that's coming up, and also lots of great things happening. Thursday, March the 9th, I attended the VCOG board meeting, and VCOG, of course, is the Ventura Council of Governments. Is that, am I, I'm getting the correct, basically, it is an, there is one representative from each city and one representative from our board of supervisors. So there are 11, 11 representatives. And probably the most significant thing that happened for me at that meeting was that I was elected chair of VCOG for, of that organization. It's a little bit unusual because normally there is a vice chair elect, and then you have a year to serve in that capacity, and then you become chair. But this was a very unusual year where the vice chair ended up not being reelected. And so all of a sudden, there's a complete, complete opening. And so, oops, and so, from the floor, I was elected chair, and so I want to thank the, our other cities that chose to vote for me. And it will be, it will be fun serving in that capacity. I look forward to it. And there are some exciting things that are being discussed. Of course, some of the middle mile, some of the internet connectivity that's being discussed, the REIT funds, et cetera. There are some issues certainly that will be affecting Simi Valley and our region. And it also means that the big parties held in Simi Valley this year, so just putting it out there right now. I also, after that, quickly stopped over at, at our Cultural Arts Center, where it was the opening reception for a new art distribution or art exhibit of the, of weaving by Regina Vergang, if I'm saying her name correctly, from Ventura. Sandy there has done a beautiful job curating these wonderful, these wonderful art galleries that we now have happening there. And so go over there and see this amazing, beautiful weaving hanging on the walls. It's beautiful. And also, I should, should tell you that Hunchback of Notre Dame is the musical that's taking place right now. I talked to someone today who said it was so phenomenal that the singing, that they just, and this is a performer who said the music was just incredible, and that I had to go see it. So I'm putting that on my to-do list and want to encourage everyone else to put it on your to-do list as well. Friday, I was sorry to, but I just want to send my condolences to Scott Juceum, who has done much for our community, especially during COVID. He was holding drive-in theaters, et cetera, finding ways to, to keep us safe but entertained. He lost his son, Ben, and there was a special, special commemorative memorial that was held for him on March the 10th. And that was his sweet son, Ben, who was the twin of the baby that was lost in the Shaking Syndrome. And so, anyway, just, it was a very sad but beautiful gathering. And so my heart to the Juceum family, and love them and want to say to think about them. Sunday, Saturday, I was part of a wonderful performance, Lamb of God, Sunday, May 12th, daylight savings time. And I don't know about you guys, but it's taken a little while to adjust to that. So maybe it's, anyway, hate missing that hour of sleep. On Tuesday, March the 14th, I want to thank the school district and PTA for their every 15-minute program. I want you to know that I did not attend Tuesday, which was the crash scene. I attended Wednesday when it was indoors, when they have the recap and the filming. But I understand that to make that happen, and it was, if you remember Tuesday, it was raining and pouring. To make that happen, they went to significant expense to tent the bleachers for all of the students who were attending. But I, it's such an important program, and I wanted to thank the school and PTA for going to that expense to make it happen even in the midst of all the rain. But I did attend it on Wednesday, March the 15th. It was beautiful. It, it just was really nice, well-done. And the message is driven home to our youth, the importance of, of, of the, what can happen if you are not being safe in your driving. And that's everything from texting to substances to alcohol. Anyway, it was, it was well, it was well illustrated. And I will, and so thank you to all the many, many participants. That included our, of course, our police force and even our mortuary, local mortuary, and just a lot of people made it successful. It was interesting because as I was sitting there attending it, there was a sweet young lady, a junior, who was there filming the event. And at the end, I could see she was visibly moved. And so I put my arm around her and learned that she had lost four friends just the year previous. She'd moved here from Georgia and had experienced that traumatic loss. And so it's, it's real. It is real. Also, on Wednesday, March the 15th, I had a lengthy conversation with Andrew Thomas, who is our SCE, S C E, Public Affairs, anyway, Southern California Edison man, who, and there are issues I know that we face, particularly with PSPSs, and we talked about a variety of things. Today, at work, my power went out, and it was out all day. And I, so I didn't want to, to curry the favor, but I happened to have his cell phone number. So now I have contact to, to find out what's going. So there, there, clearly, we, I just came, it came home that when we are out of power, it's a real problem. And so that relationship is important, and being able to communicate with our residents is important. And so we talked about a variety of ways where information could be had and services could be had when, when there are power outages. And so I'll continue with that relationship, and he invited me to attend a quarterly meeting that they have.
And that was an unplanned outage?
That was an unplanned outage. That was, I believe, a.
It was an equipment failure.
Yes. And I, I'm, well, I'm told it's supposed to be on at 11 o'clock tonight. I may be driving by my office tonight to see if it's back on, because that really does affect one's business. I also attended, well, also thank you to Councilmember Kavanaugh. She and I interviewed 14, 13 outstanding applicants for Area Housing Authority Board of Commissioners that evening. And I think we both concurred that all of them were outside. Any one of them could have served well. So thank you for, it was good to do that with you. Thursday, March 16th, thank you, City Manager Gable. I appreciate always your time that you're willing to sit and visit with about issues. That evening, I attended Moore Park College's Tempest. If you haven't seen Shakespeare in a while, go see it. It was beautifully done. And they really did some great things. And so, and they need our support, I think. And so wonderful that our youth are being exposed to Shakespeare and learning Shakespeare. And I do not know how they memorize all the lines that they do. Friday, March the 17th, I attended the Simi Valley Foundation Teacher of the Month, where Casey Barata of Hillside Middle School was given the award. And she was just surprised and delighted. And I think everyone there was very pleased that thought she was well-deserved. And it was a very happy St. Patrick's Day for her. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To reiterate, Councilmember Littscher, yes, the every 15-minute program is, is absolutely a wonderful program. My daughter and Detective Baker were actually in the first event held in 2002, 2003 at Royal High, Royal High School in that. So yeah, isn't that funny? Both the Baker boys, the brothers, they were juniors, and my daughter was a senior. So that was my first experience with it. I actually use that when I talk about the Police Foundation and all of the things that the Police Foundation sponsors. That's one of my key things that I talk about because it had such a personal impact on me that it's something I can be passionate about. And again, the Police Foundation did donate $5,000 this year, again, for their, for that event. So that was wonderful. So thank you for bringing that up. It is, it's very moving. On Wednesday, March 15th, again, with Councilmember Littscher, we interviewed those 13 applicants for the Area Housing Authority Board. And again, they were all great. It was nice to re-meet some of them and to meet new ones. So it's always a nice thing for us to be able to do that. On March 16th, we had our first in-person Economic Development Collaborative full board meeting. We actually had probably 35 people there along with staff. So it was a very, very good turnout. The EDC Economic Development Collaborative is, I'm currently the chair. You're the chair of VCOG. I'm the chair at EDC. I guess they're looking at Simi going, hmm, how can we make you guys work harder? But the EDC subsidizes or, and/or assists our business communities. So just in the last period, I wanted to just go over real quick a couple of accomplishments that they have. Oh, and number Oh, and number one, all this is free to our businesses, okay? Anything, all these type of things. So they, we have 50 business advisors that are experts in different areas, so if your particular business needs an advisor in import-export, or HR, or making a business plan, we've got somebody to help you at the EDC. We paired 160 clients with business advisors just in the last month, so that's how good this program is. It's inclusive, we have Inclusive Innovation Hub. It's a no-cost technology service and resource provider, so you can reach out to them for that. They do childcare technical assistance program, helping you to get associated with the Ventura County Office of Education and the CDC, and, not CDC, CDR, Child Development Resources. Employee retention tax credits, it's tax time, right? You can possibly, if you paid employees while shut down due to COVID-19 or had significant declines in grocery receipts, you might be eligible for the ERC tax credit. So reach out. If you, if your tax accountant doesn't know it, or you do your own taxes and you need help, reach out to the EDC, they've got somebody to help you. We have the STEP Grant Program, which has helped thousands of small businesses obtain grants in the international marketplace, so that's available. And the Disaster Assistance Program, they've experienced a high demand for disaster assistance, and they've been working with the SBA and FEMA to assist business owners who were impacted by our major weather disasters that we've had recently. So that's, that's a very good thing. And as I think I mentioned at our last program, or our last meeting, the Simi Val, City of Simi Valley now has a loan program through the EDC. The EDC is just monitor, handling it for us and doing the loan processing, but it's for businesses in Simi Valley that need a loan. So reach out to them, and they will work with you and assist you in getting what you need. So I'm very proud to be a part of the EDC. It hasn't been something utilized as much in the East County, so both myself and then Bob Angler, he's on Thousand Oaks City Council, we're both really trying to get the East County involved in this. There are just so many free things that they do. It's fantastic, so it's, it's there for anybody. If you have any questions, you can always contact me, and I'll get you in touch with them. And the last thing I had is yesterday, I had the, the pleasure of attending the Armenian-American Museum Gala yesterday, and it was at the Fairmont Hotel down in Century City. Don't go down there the same day that they're having the, the marathon. Yes, I think I, I, my car kept telling me I was a mile away from where I needed to go, and I circled for, yeah, I don't know how long. I finally found it, though, I finally found it, but my bank was a sponsor, so that's actually why I went, but what was really nice is to see what they're doing. They're building a museum in Glendale, of course, and they're doing a great job, and they will have cultural things from Armenia, but they will also have other cultural displays. That's kind of their, their goal. But the most fun for me was, at the next table, was LA County Supervisor Catherine Berger. So I got to, I introduced myself and said, I'm from Simi Valley City Council, and she goes, oh, she goes, how are your crime rates? I said, our crime rates are great. They're lower than they were when we were the safest city in the nation. She goes, how do you do that? And I said, we have a great PD. She goes, you have your own police department, don't you? And I said, yes, we do, and you know what? The community supports them, and that's what helps make them great. They're dedicated, and our city really supports them at all. But it was very nice to, to meet her, and she said, stay in touch if you need anything. So I now have a friend in LA County, so I'm, I'm impressed with that, but she was very pleasant, and then one or two of her staff actually live here in Simi Valley, too, so that was nice. But it was an unexpected pleasure to meet her, so thank you very much, and that's the end of my report.
Mayor Pro Tim Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, the March 6, this is more like a PSA than something I did for the city. When you get those things in the mail, maybe many, many of you may belong to service clubs or something like that, and you get these things in the mail, asking you to participate in a full-body screening, of course, they're not free, you have to pay for them. Having a friend of ours, who's a well-known person in the city, come to me and tell me that he took this and found out there were some issues there, and he got fixed just in time, I recommend this to everybody. If you get one of those things, say they're having a full-body screening somewhere in town, mine was at the Mason's Lodge, I went over there and did it, I suggest take advantage of it. They're not that expensive, they're pretty, they're not intrusive, and the, this peace of mind you get from them is amazing. So there's my PSA for the day, but if you get those, I would suggest you take, take advantage of it. On Wednesday, March 8, we had a Police Foundation board meeting. The Police Foundation, which Councilmember Kavanaugh talked about a minute ago, is a great organization in our city, they had a great write-up on a Claire.id Simi Valley page. If you look on my Facebook page under the City Council page, Mike Judge, Simi Valley City Council, I posted a link to the, to the article. It's a great article, talks all about how the, like, like Councilmember Kavanaugh said, our community and our police department and the Police Foundation keep our city one of the safest cities in the country. On Friday, March 10, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Networking Breakfast, always a good time, hang out with the chamber, let them know that we care about all the businesses in the city, the City Council does. On Sunday, March 12, I was privileged, I was going there to celebrate a birthday of one of our council members, but he didn't show. It was at Nectar of the Dogs, our new winery here in town. If you haven't been there yet, I suggest check, if you like wine and you like good atmosphere, live music, check it out. It's over at the end of Chambers Lane, they're down there in that new commercial center. They have a great little winery, the wine was good, the, like I said, the experience and, and the, the atmosphere was nice. They're gonna start having food trucks on, on the weekends, they've got their permit for it, and now they're gonna have food trucks, so look forward to something like that to go on, so don't ever say there's nothing to do in Simi Valley. That's our first of hopefully many. That was the first one that we just approved, I think, last year. On March 15, I attended via Zoom California League of Cities Legislative Briefing, where they told us of all the crazy stuff coming out of the assembly already. Remember, no man or woman is safe when the assembly is in session. So there's some stuff coming down. Our city's taken mostly the same stance as the League of City on a lot of these stuff, so you'll hear it from us, too. When I have more information, I have a definitive list, I will make sure to bring that and read it during one of my briefings here. On, after that, I, I got in a little late, but I attended the Chamber of Commerce's Economic Development Meeting via Zoom. It was informative what I did here, I mean, I'm looking forward to watching the whole meeting next time. On Thursday, March 16, I attended the League of Cities Public Safety Committee via Zoom, which is normally a meeting we have to go to Sacramento for, so I'm happy they're still doing those by Zoom, I don't, because it's not really, I don't know how they're getting away with it, but we did it. That, again, talked about most of the legislature coming down that's going to affect public safety entities, police, fire, and stuff like that, and again, our legislature is doing some crazy stuff in Sacramento that we have to be careful of and watch out for. Some of those, some of those bills coming out, we definitely have to oppose. On Friday, March 17, I want to congratulate somebody in our audience right now, because the Elks gave out their awards for the year. The Elks Lodge in our city gave out their awards for the year, and Mike Court was named Elk of the Year for his citizenship in our city. Congratulations, Mike. Outstanding. This Thursday, March 25, this Thursday, March 25, our county supervisor, Janice Parvin, is going to be having a town hall at the Elks Lodge over off of Cooner, back there behind the Santa Susana Cafe. Thank you. I always call it the Walkin. Behind Santa Susana Cafe, the Elks Lodge is going to be having the town hall with the county supervisors. He's going to bring a bunch of county people in from public works, different agencies in the county. It is an RSVP-only, so if you want RSVP to the town hall, go to the city's website, because it is posted on the city's website, or go to the county website, and it'll be there. Thank you very much. That's the end of my report.
Okay, let's see here. Wednesday, March 8. I attended with, along with Councilmember Rhodes, the Park District Orientation Tour. Very informative, interesting scope of stuff that they deal with is a lot more than I imagine. Let's see here. Saturday, March 11. I, along with members of our police department, attended the, the Pakin Second Annual Gala up at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library, and the topic was human trafficking, and it was probably, one of the speakers that night was probably the most intense presentation I've ever heard regarding human trafficking. Amazing. Tuesday, March 14, every 15 minutes, great program. I hadn't attended it before, and I will say, this was the practical day where they actually had the accident, and I think the rain added to the drama. It made it even more realistic. And it was, as, as the program was going on, I took the time to look through the stands and could not believe, you know, how focused the students were on what was going on. Wednesday, March 15, the Chamber EDC meeting. Don't really have anything to report from that. Can't really talk about that. Let's see. Thursday, March 16, in the evening, I attended the Simi Valley Police Department Citizens Academy Kickoff Night and participated in that program, kicking the evening off and walking, welcoming the students. On Friday, March 17, despite transportation challenges, I attended a check presentation from Congresswoman Brownlee at the sanitation plant to retrofit some of our sewer system. And on Saturday, March 18, and I'm only bringing this up because it was kind of a really neat thing, I got invited by the commanding officer of Naval Base Ventura County to attend the Point Mugu Air Show, and the reason why that was so special was because not only did I get to go and watch the air show with the commanding officer, but as the son of a Navy man, when I was five years old, some 20-plus years ago, I attended the Point Mugu Air Show and sat with the commanding officer. So it was kind of like a neat deal that after 20-plus years, I got to do it again. And that is my report. Let's see here. Call for any future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, as my, in my role of the Representative of Clean Power Alliance, they have asked that the city sign on endorsing a bill. I would like to present the council with a report on that and discuss it at our next meeting.
Then, I am going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Tina Allegra, former Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Thank you, everybody. A good evening.